Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the City of Benton North Committee Hole Meeting. Today is March 3rd, 2025. It's 5 o'clock PM. We have a couple items to discuss on items to appear, and then we will tackle tomorrow night's consent agenda. Let's work on five and six. For that, we welcome our Public Works Director, Brian Schmidt, and City Engineer Brent Morlock. And Brent's in the middle of the room. I think you're probably handling this. We got your memo, and everybody has had the opportunity to read that. Thank you for the update.
Absolutely.
You have the floor. Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Your Honor. As you mentioned, we have two items, both related to the same project on Cow tonight. The first item is a resolution designating C2 Creative Concrete as a non-responsible bidder on the Devil's Glen Widening Project. As you mentioned, I have sent out a letter and a memo that were provided to both council and the contractor. Just to give you a little background, C2 Creative Concrete was the low bidder on the Devil's Glen Widening Project from 53rd Avenue to Crow Lake Drive. It's Phase 2 of the overall widening project north of 53rd. That project bid on Tuesday, February 11th. They were the apparent low bidder. Due to the size, complexity of the Devil's Glen project compared to the work that we've had prior experience with C2 during the 2024 construction season, we did a post-bid analysis, really wanted to do a deep dive into the three projects that we had with them, because we did have concerns about their ability to perform on a project of this size, given that we had specifically only had experience with them on much smaller and less complex projects. The three projects that we had with them during the 2024 season were our annual sidewalk repair program, the riverfront levee bollard replacement project, and our Palmer Hills entrance culvert replacement project. So, three very different projects, all pretty small in terms of overall scope and overall fee, the highest being about $200,000. Multiple recurring issues, recurring themes that we experienced through these projects that kind of gave us pause about their ability to perform on a project of that size. Probably seven or eight categories here. I'm not going to go into detail on them, but I'll kind of go over them as a whole. Starting at the beginning of the project, issues with delays in returning executed contracts, bonds, insurance that were not in cooperation with our city standards, delays in scheduling pre-construction meetings to actually get the work started, making sure that we could provide the proper timeframe from the beginning of a pre-con to when construction was anticipated to start, consistent late start to all the projects, which generally meant a compressed construction schedule, which ultimately led to projects running past their completion dates, frequent inadequate staffing with that staff, sometimes lacking the proper technical expertise and experience to do the work, numerous examples of poor workmanship, consistent lack of awareness of city specs, then ultimately failure to meet the project milestone or completion dates, and some issues with what we thought was maybe some unprofessional conduct from the contractor themselves. So, putting all those together, given that that project, like I said, is a much more complicated project. We're talking, you know, 10 times the amount just in terms of the fee. The project area is much larger. We're talking our second busiest roadway in the city. Use of a paver is required, which they had not done, at least in the city. We also contacted a few other cities in the area that have had experience with them, and they have not done that kind of work for either of them. Heard some similar issues of project issues there. You've got the school nearby, compressed timeframe, the ability to impact other projects if this goes poorly. So, we were really worried about the impact to, you know, both the city, its taxpayers, the motoring public. So ultimately, that's why we have this in front of council, to ask to be, to have them designated as non-responsible for this project. The second item would then be a subsequent award to the next bidder that would become the lowest responsible responsive bidder.
Okay. Let's take this on items to appear five. Anybody from council have questions of Brent? Before we allow... Max, right? Okay. Welcome, Max, to be heard. Go ahead. Greg?
Brent, as I understand it, there were a number of things, and the purpose of tonight's meeting is to get an understanding, both from staff and from the vendor about those concerns. Regardless of how this plays out, your position is we ought to do the next vendor. We shouldn't reject all of the bids and start over.
Correct.
Okay.
Other questions? Okay. Max? Hi, I'm Bob Gallagher. I'm the mayor. You have an opportunity to be heard. There's a podium in the back that has a microphone. Excuse me. That might be the best place for you. Introduce yourself, your company, and your address, and then you go ahead and tell us why you think council ought to reject the staff recommendation and consider you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I am Max Wehage, representing C2 Creative Concrete from DeKalb, Illinois, with the address of 1567 Grand Drive, Unit 1. So, we met earlier in the week, me and city staff, and they have this list, which I was told everyone would have. So, I would just like to go through some of the bullet points and kind of void and nullify some of these statements. And then I've prepared a statement that I would like to read to council.
Go right ahead.
All right. So, I would like to start with the contract issues. There were two contracts where we were asked to return them or if we had received them and we had not. So then they resent out these contracts. We notarized them, sent them back. Typically, and we touched on this in the staff meeting, typically we express mail things to ensure that they're there, especially things that need to be returned with signatures. As far as like compressed schedules, there wasn't a required start date to the first two projects. There's an early start date. And so, we showed up, did the work within the timeframe pretty much for the first two. It's the last project that we really had issues on. And this last project was put out at a time, I think it was awarded in October, if I'm remembering correctly. So, everybody is in a rush. Every city municipality is in a rush when it comes to the end of the season, per se. So, we had obligations in other cities, and we were working in other cities. And so, when we showed up, it was the last week before it was supposed to be reopened. But the temperatures that week were the highest that they've been all month. And so, the city, the city staff, they told us, you know, you should have done it when the water was frozen. Well, if we did it when it was colder and the water was frozen, it would have just taken more time. We'd probably just be finishing. Or we would have finished in that last week of warm weather. But regardless, it was a seven-day hard closure. We had one of the biggest machines that a person can get, and it wouldn't even scratch the surface barely. There was numerous utilities on that project that it's our responsibility not to damage them. Now, we did hit some abandoned utilities that weren't even on the prints, and nobody really even knew about. Now, with that, that ate up two days of our time. We subcontracted to J.C. Dillon. They brought out a hydro vac truck, and those guys worked pretty much from sunup to sundown trying to expose these lines. Then during that first week, we had a pretty good rainfall. And we were laying pipe, the culvert, to, you know, move the water downstream. So, when that happened, it threw a lot of variables into the equation. Working conditions were probably about the worst that they could be. It started to, again, get cold, and we were running into issues with our pumps freezing. And there is a comment in here that most people take like a trough heater and throw it in there. If it's still water, that would work. But if it's running water, that's pretty futile. There's another bullet point on here that is of me referencing, referencing working at Maxwell Construction from Iowa City. So, there's just misunderstandings and a lot of times where these statements are contradicting themselves. So, I did work for Maxwell Construction for a winter on the Dubuque Street project in Iowa City, where we were excavating 30 feet down to basically bedrock, going right in front of Mayflower dorms there in Iowa City on Dubuque. So, I have been around pipe work. I have done it. The emails said that it was the first time that C2 had done pipe work. Correct. That's correct. So, to be ridiculed for trying to expand, I didn't see how that was, you know, even relevant. There's another bullet point on here that states me asking the city to move a section of fence. It's a very tight area on that project, and moving one section of fence, I thought, wasn't a big ask. And we were told no. I informed them, you know, it's probably going to, the rocks are probably going to hit the post. They didn't want to hear any part of it and said that if we moved it, we were going to have issues. So, we did the best we could backing a semi with riprap, which is big 3, 4, 500-pound rock across Middle Road in live traffic with flaggers. And we got as close as we could to the edge there before the truck would inevitably tip over into the detention pond. And the trucker released his gate, put it up, and a couple rocks evidently took off a little bit of paint on the bottom of the post. So, if I'm coming to the city saying, hey, we got to do this to be safe, it should never be a question. There's a lot of instances on that job where we had to do stuff that wasn't safe. We didn't feel was right, and we were out there doing it. The non-responsible designation doesn't reflect our company. We had our guys out here for 14 days straight, and we worked on a Sunday just to try and, you know, meet the milestone just because we were having such a hard time with the excavation and the project as a whole. We don't feel that it's fair to be ridiculed to not meet that when we're not the one that put the project out at that time of year. And I understand that it's a golf course, that it generates revenue, and that it's a place that people like to go. We have a lot of things too that we like doing, and sometimes we don't get to do them, but we're not pointing fingers at people. And we just want to be treated fairly. A non-responsible designation, I don't think, is fair. I understand the concerns of the project on Devil's Glen Road and the magnitude of it. Personally, the company, we haven't, we haven't done big paving jobs, no. But with the use of a paver, which is a machine that pretty much prints the concrete out like Play-Doh, it takes a lot of the work out of it. And we are in the middle of becoming signatory with the labor unions. So, as far as the comments made about some of our staff, I don't think that, and there are other union contractors on the bid tab, but they're towards the top. So, I don't think that the city construction department could say that, you know, we're going to have staffing issues if we're going to go to a labor union. And that was a decision that was made months before we even bid this project, and we actually bid this project the day that it was due.
Did you have a, go ahead. You've got a statement you wanted to read as well?
Yes.
Okay.
I will get to that. The sidewalk repair program, we have received numerous compliments from the inspector Larry Gregovich, and our guys received numerous comments, compliments. But there is a lot of bullet points in this that, like, for instance, 3118 Dundee required a signed waiver to the resident prior to removing due to tree roots. We weren't aware of that. And if we need to sign a contract to take a piece of sidewalk that had tree roots, it should have been conveyed to us by the inspector when we showed up to remove it. 3705 Thunder Ridge Road is a lady, and it says that I berated her and yelled at her. I didn't raise my voice once. We saw through her invisible dog fence line, and we did repair that. Her decorative concrete edging was already in shambles. So, something that really shouldn't be a thing. We hit a fuel line out at the aisle, and it wasn't marked. It was never reported to the Pipeline Commission, which it should be because it carries fuel out into a massive body of water. So, the city kind of took over on that one, and I told them, I said, you know, it should be reported, and it's not my fault that whoever did it didn't do their job. So, the city subbed it out to PipeCo to get it fixed. Now, we also, in the same swipe, hit an electric line, which we didn't, we didn't make the fuel line unusable, and we didn't make the electrical line unusable. We just damaged the exterior PVC pipe that was on the outside protecting the inner. And so, we had an electrician on site, so we just took care of that and didn't bill for it, didn't do anything about it, just took care of it. Now, there's another bullet point on here that says I sent derogatory texts. Now, we went through the text messages at the staff meeting, and I didn't say anything derogatory. In fact, Dave Merritt, the construction manager, on the first day that we mobilized to the project, he exited a city vehicle and immediately started pointing his fingers at me and yelling at me, all in front of my staff, for something that's happened. We had a foreman quit the Friday before we were supposed to start, and he canceled the delivery of the machinery that was supposed to be there. So, the first day was a nightmare. And I told Dave, I said, we're going to get the job done. Like, don't worry about it, but please stop yelling at me, and we don't need to act like this out here. On that same project, I did, in fact, kick a traffic control sign when Dave and Pat were leaving the site because I was upset. But that wasn't anything that I, you know, kicked it towards them, nothing like that. I will get on to my statement momentarily. We, we can understand and appreciate the concerns of the engineering and construction department. What we don't understand is labeling us non-responsible. I mean, that has ramifications beyond what are being conveyed. In fact, there are some jobs where we have to be pre-qualified. So, they will look back at this, and it'll be a big red flag. Now, if Brent and the city staff don't want us to do the paving, that's fine. You know, that's a conversation that we can have, and we kind of have had it, and we're having it here tonight. But labeling us non-responsible, that's not a conversation that needs to be had. The first two projects, they went really good. We were under the gun for both of them. And I would like to point out, on the first one, the city has in their possession a bond for the amount of the contract. And there was a big section of work taken off on Grant Street because the DOT had to be involved. Now, we never were given the opportunity to submit to our bid bond for a bid bond that was lower than the actual contract because we didn't feel that we needed to, and we feel like we were always doing a pretty good job for Benton North. We're always open to get better, and there's a multitude of ways for us to get better as a company, as myself, as a person, and always moving forward. The goal is to always constantly be getting better than the day prior. So, this is the statement that I've written, and I have copies for council. At C2, we take great pride in our reputation as responsible and reliable business. Being labeled an unresponsible bidder does not accurately reflect our track record of integrity, compliance, and service delivery. We strongly believe that our company meets all of the criteria of a responsible bidder and deserves a fair evaluation. One of the key aspects of being a responsible bidder is adhering to all legal and contractual requirements of which our company ensures full compliance with all applicable laws, regulations, and industry standards. We meticulously review bid specifications and submit all required documents in a timely manner and follow procurement guidelines to the letter. Any perceived non-compliance was either a misunderstanding or minor administrative issue rather than a reflection of our overall responsibility and capability. A responsible bidder must have the financial resources necessary to complete the project successfully. C2 has a strong financial foundation, demonstrated by our history of successfully completing similar projects on time and within budget. We maintain proper financial records, have sufficient bonding capacity, and provide proof of financial responsibility when required. Any claims to the contrary are not reflective of our actual financial standing. Our track record and performance. Our company has a long history of successfully completing projects that meet or exceed expectations. We have received positive feedback from most of our clients, and our portfolio demonstrates our ability to deliver quality work on schedule. Our team consists of highly skilled professionals and apprentices who are dedicated to excellence. We have the resources, expertise, guidance, and guidance to fulfill our contractual obligations reliably. As a responsible bidder, we invest in our employees, ensuring they receive proper training, fair wages, and a safe working environment. We uphold ethical business practices, treat our subcontractors and suppliers fairly, and comply with all labor laws. Our company values transparency and integrity, which are at the core of our operations. If there was ever any misunderstanding or miscommunication regarding our bid or fully committed to resolving the issue, we are always willing to engage in discussions to clarify any concerns and provide additional documentation or take corrective actions if necessary. Our goal is to build a strong, long-term relationship with the clients and procurement officials based on trust and accountability. C2 is without a question a responsible bidder. Our financial stability, compliance with regulations, proven track record, ethical business practices, and commitment to communication all demonstrate our ability to successfully execute projects. We respectfully request a reevaluation of our status and the opportunity to continue contributing to the success of future projects.
Thank you. Mr. Wehage, did I say that right?
Yep.
Okay. You said you had some copies. Chief, would you do me a favor and grab the copies for council? And you can pass those down. Thank you very much. So, Mr. Wehage, in order for the city to choose the second bidder, I'm going to talk to my city attorney here, we have to make the determination that the lowest bid is not responsible. Is that right?
No. Thank you, thank you, Your Honor. So, under Chapter 26, the, the decision would be you take the lowest responsive, responsible bid, or you reject all of the bids. In order, if, in this case, C2 was the apparent low bidder, pecuniary dollar amount, but, but the case law is clear that that, the dollar amount isn't the only thing. So, I think one of the, maybe the frustrations that maybe, Mr. Wehage, Wehage? Has is just the word responsible and what that means. It has a particular meaning under Chapter 26. And what the city, what staff has done is say, in looking at the projects that we've, that you've done for the city, that we don't think that, that for the project, the Devil's Glen project, that, that, that the, we don't have the evidence that, that your company at this time could complete that project in a way that is cost-effective, that is on time, that doesn't have quality issues. Not to say that you're not responsible in the broader term, or the broader meaning of the term. It's a, it's kind of a term of art under Chapter 26. And then to the mayor's point, in order, the city is in, having to deal with the bidding requirements of Iowa law, and we take the low responsive, responsible bidder. So, at this point, C2 has bid on this project as the low dollar amount. We feel like there are risks to the city and to the, to the taxpayers if C2 would be awarded the project. So, as long as you are still a bidder on this project, we need this initial step of determining for this project that C2 is non-responsible in, under the, the meaning of Chapter 26. If that is...
That's exactly what I was thinking. So, I just, just so that you heard that. And number two, I suppose it would be possible for C2 to withdraw their bid.
Rescind our bid, yes, sir.
Then there wouldn't be any determination by council one way or the other tomorrow. I don't know which way they're going to vote. That's why you have the opportunity to be heard. But I think they could withdraw the bid, making them not part of a discussion about being non-responsible.
That's, that's right.
So, that would be a possibility for you too. I'm not telling you to do it.
Yeah, yes, sir. So, and that's kind of what we're getting down to. And there's a number of people that could be called, and you guys could get all the information you need about me and my capabilities as far as Devil's Glen goes. I understand that I am a young guy. Doesn't mean that I don't know what's going on. I mean, obviously, if we have the bonding capacity to do that project, then we probably have the mental and physical capacity to do it as well. Especially with the steps becoming signatory with the unions. The sky's the limit for us, and we're not going to, we don't want to see something reflect poorly on us just because of someone's, and personal opinions. I mean, this bid was due to be unsealed at 10:00 AM. The bid tab wasn't posted until 3:30. So, to me, what I see is, you know, it was kind of made up that day. And I feel like city staff maybe talked amongst themselves, and obviously, they did, and that is why we are here. I would more, I'd be more than happy to rescind my bid and save everyone the paperwork and the mess if that works for council and Brent.
Is there a formal process by which that would happen?
I'm guessing we would need something in writing just to put into our file.
Okay.
Yep.
We can do that.
Okay.
We wish you well, and I appreciate the work you've done on behalf of the city.
No, we're not going anywhere anytime soon.
Good. Well, keep, keep learning, keep growing, and we wish you the best.
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir. Very nice to talk to you today. Appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Okay. Move to item...
Your Honor, did I understand then that the vendor has specifically withdrawn the bid and will be documented at a later date, allowing us to move to the next low bid?
That's what I heard.
Yes, sir.
Yep.
All right. Thank you, sir.
I, I will follow up with the bidder first thing in the morning. That way, we have it before you make your decision tomorrow. So, everything, at least, is in order.
Okay.
We have that before the bid is actually awarded.
Fine. Fair enough. Tell us about number, items to appear six. This is the awarding of the contract.
Yep. So, that will move to the, the next lowest responsive, responsible bidder. In that particular case, that was CDMI Construction. I believe there was about a $46,000, $47,000 difference, something between the bids, less than 5%.
Okay. Any questions on items to appear six for tomorrow? All right. Seeing none, let's move to our consent agenda items. Is there any consent agenda item any particular council member would like to discuss at this time? Looking right, looking left. Anything on consent? All right. Then I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as written for tomorrow night.
Go ahead.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We'll take up the consent agenda as written tomorrow. Decker, you have placed at our chairs the strategic plan update. You have the floor.
Thank you, Your Honor. At your spots is a update that staff put together[1795.87] At your spots is a update that staff put together on the council targets, both on the council side and the management side. The top 10 in each one might be, there might be 12 on one. This is for your reading pleasure, and we will plan to give you an update in person at the first meeting in April. This gives you all the month to read it and call us with any questions. But wanted to make sure you got a good update on where we were. There are some updates from the management items on the back of the strategic plan as well. So just wanted to make sure you got that, and please have that read by tomorrow night at 5:00 o'clock. I'll give you a test, so.
Well, we haven't had an opportunity to review it, but if anybody has any questions on it, obviously, right now would be fine, or take a look at it and then make those calls.
Do you have a high layer?
Uh, no. We've got one in the back, in the other room. Okay, I don't have anything to add to tomorrow night's agenda. Does anybody else have anything to add to tomorrow night's agenda? All right, seeing none, I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn. We stay adjourned, thank you, good work, people. We will, wow, take 10. Let's take, yeah, let's come back at a quarter till. That will give you 13 minutes. Michelle's laying out some snacks for you.